Normal procedures apply, the paperwork, if you have got any declarations, obviously, sign the paperwork as well, thank you. Next agenda item is motions. In light of the sad news concerning the death of Her Majesty the Queen, I am looking to seek the agreement of council to defer those items currently on the agenda to the next meeting of the council. And I'm also looking to exercise my discretion to allow a motion paying tribute to Her Majesty the Queen to be brought forward and debated. Public and member questions with answers have been published on the website. Any member of the public or councillor who wishes to ask a supplementary can put that in writing to Democratic Services to receive a written response. In order to proceed on that basis, I would now like to move a motion without notice to suspend standing orders two point one, except two point one point two, eight point seven, eight point eight and nine point six, and to defer the remaining items of business to the following meeting of council. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Erst. Can I have a vote of all members? If members are happy with that, can they indicate by showing their hands please? Thank you members, that looks unanimous to me. I would now like to exercise my discretion under standing order two point two, to allow a motion to be moved which pays tribute to Her Majesty the Queen. Before we proceed to that motion, I would like you to ask us that you join me in two minutes of silence. Thank you members. Motion nine one two, to mark the death of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth the Second. On behalf of the people of Gloucestershire, council expresses our profound sorrow at the news of the death of Her Majesty the Queen. The Queen has been a steadfast hand for seven decades, providing leadership and service that has transcended political lines. Her Majesty's commitment to her role and sense of duty serves as an example to us all. As the people of Gloucestershire mourn her passing, council extends its heartfelt sympathy to His Majesty, King Charles the Third and his family. God save the King. Can I invite the lead of the council to move the motion?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Today, we gather as representatives of the County of Gloucestershire. We gather as the elected leaders of our respective communities. We gather in public service to remember and recognise the extraordinary public service given by Her Majesty the Queen throughout her reign. For as His Majesty King Charles the Third said last Friday, Queen Elizabeth was a life well-lived, a promise with destiny kept, and she is mourned most deeply in her passing. For I am sure that I am not alone in this chamber in being taken back by surprise by the depth of sorrow and personal loss I felt last Thursday as the news broke of the Queen's passing. As former Prime Minister Boris Johnson reflected in his statement, she seems so timeless, so wonderful, that I'm afraid we'd come to believe like children, she would just go on and on. For her reign has encapsulated the entirety of my life, indeed the life of my parents. She was the one constant thread through fifteen prime ministers and seven decades of upheaval and social change. She was the one person who could bring us all together, whether it was through national occasions like her jubilees, or even locally on her twenty official visits to our county. She encapsulated a sense of national pride beyond politics, a sense of community beyond social divide, a link with our history and a feeling of continuity in an ever-changing world, stretched out over generations, bringing us together as a people united by a common home. And when she spoke, we listened. Like in Covid, in the midst of that first lockdown, when we were all struggling to come to terms with a sense of separation and loss, when it seemed that the world had changed with no end in sight, Queen Elizabeth managed to give us hope. For who did not shed a tear when she concluded her broadcast to the nation by saying, better days will return, we will be with our friends again, we will be with our family again, we will meet again? Many here today, I'm sure, will take the opportunity to reflect on their personal experience of meeting the Queen. I was lucky enough to meet the Queen in 2014, when I received my MBE at Windsor Castle. Now, for those of you who don't know, you were never told before in Invesher which member of the royal family will be there. So as we made our way up to the castle, my wife kept asking, who was performing the ceremony today? She was overjoyed when one of the policemen on duty confirmed it was Her Majesty. Personally, it just added to the bundle of nerves that were already building up inside. Now, at that point, you as a recipient are separated from your family. They get taken to the hall to watch the full ceremony, while you are taken to a holding room with other recipients awaiting your turn to be called, a wait of many hours. And when it's finally your turn, you are led in a line through a number of state rooms that seem to go on forever, before you enter this human chain of pass the parcel, as you add closer to your time, your moment with the Queen. Sorry. And in that moment, the Queen has an extraordinary ability to put you at your ease, and all those nerves just disappear. In that moment, you are having a normal conversation, one that I will personally never forget. A one-on-one, though admittedly, with your sovereign. My experience is not unique. Speak to anyone who has been fortunate to meet the Queen, and you will hear the same story. A story reflective of the Queen's ability to be at ease with her people and her unwavering dedication to duty. For in 1947, at the age of just twenty-one, the Queen, then Princess Elizabeth, made this promise to her people. I declare before you all that my whole life, whether it be long or short, shall be devoted to your service. So we gather to mourn her passing, to remember her devotion and seventy years of dedicated service, but also to give thanks, to give thanks to that promise kept, to give thanks for all the times she pulled us together as a nation, to the example she set, the sense of public service she inspired, to the way she touched all our lives and defined the very age in which we live in today. So Your Majesty, on behalf of the residents of Gloucestershire... Thank you ma'am, thank you.
Councillor Orthon, thank you very much. We have three joint seconders of the motion, leaders of the political groups, so firstly, I'd like to ask councillor Ben Evans to second.
Thank you Chair, and thank you Mark for that brilliant tribute. On behalf of the Liberal Democrat Group, we're fully behind this motion, and on behalf of the group, I would like to offer our condolences to the royal family on the loss of the Queen, and to her family and friends, and to everybody who loved her. I've got a huge amount of respect for the way the Queen carried out her duty to this country. Respect that's not due to a position alone, but can only be earned through your action and character. From an early age to the very week of her death, she carried out that duty in a consistent, faithful and cheerful way. I have respect for all those people who share her sense of duty in this country, our armed forces, emergency services, nurses, unpaid carers, to name just a few, the list could go on, who serve others with the same sense of duty and faithfulness that the Queen showed throughout her life. It's difficult to know what to add to the motion, as so much has already been said and been paid in tribute over the last five days. I never met the Queen, and so I have no personal anecdote to add. So, as ever, resorting to type, I'm going to concentrate on her role as a young person and the influence she had on young people. I think it's easy, isn't it, for us to remember her as an older person, the image of her meeting the new Prime Minister last week, I think will stay with all of us, and even her age in profile on stamps and coins as she aged the twentieth into the twenty-first century. But I want to draw out aspects of her sense of duty and faithfulness that she exhibited in her youth to add to the tributes that will be said today. At age just fourteen, the Queen addressed BBC's Children Hour, aiming to raise morale amongst children who were so badly affected by the Second World War. The phrase, we know every one of us that in the end all will be well, sounds simple, but it's extremely profound talking to children that they were going to be safe and they were going to be okay. Age just seventeen, my daughter's seventeen to bring that home, changed the law, Parliament changed the law, to make her able to act as councillor of state in the event of her father, the King's, absence or incapacity. And as well documented in the last five or six days, at eighteen, she joined the territorial service. I love the fact she joined as a driver and a mechanic. I guess she could have been something that nineteen forties Britain may have seen more befitting to a princess, like a nurse for example, but choosing this role seems perfectly infitting with her persona. The persona that Churchill remarked when she was just two years old, that she was a character. At twenty-one, she made the famous pledge, which Mark quoted, that she kept and stuck to. A promise that she made as a young person, but she kept until the very week of her death. The amount of respect I have for that explains the outpouring of genuine sadness and shock that although she was ninety-six, and in one way, we were all expecting this sad day to come, had still shocked me and our group, everybody here and everybody in Gloucestershire. So, to close, I just want to reiterate that we want to pass on our deepest condolences to her family, friends and all that loved her.
Councillor Evans, thank you. Councillor John Bloxham to second please.
Thank you Chair. Through this motion of condolence today, we as the elected representatives of the people of Gloucestershire mourn the passing of a remarkable sovereign. On behalf of people of Robra Division, the parishes of Cains Cross and Robra, the County Labour Group and the wider Labour Party, I share these thoughts and sentiments. The death of our late Queen is a deep private loss for the royal family, and our thoughts are with them at this time. This community of all faiths and identities and the nation shares in their grief. Queen Elizabeth the Second created a special personal relationship with many that she met, a relationship based on service and devotion to the country. Nobody who is under the age of seventy has known anything other than Queen Elizabeth the Second on the throne, a life of public service. The late Queen displayed her love for Britain, and the British people gave that back in return, and this is why there is such an outpouring of grief at this time. She saw, or perhaps I should say saw off, fifteen prime ministers, witnessed eighteen general elections, in none of which did she ever have a vote, and she saw many changes of government. As we mourn her loss, we should also treasure her life. Our longest-serving and greatest ever monarch, she stood above the clashes of politics, and in crisis she reassured us. My colleague councillor David Morgan had the privilege during his tenure as chairman of the council of meeting the late Queen and having lunch with her when she visited Insworth Barracks in 2015. Graham has echoed the remarks of the current chairman, who spoke on our behalf, expressing grief at the very sad loss for all of us of the late Queen. This county has had a special relationship with the royal family, is home to several of its members, and has been visited by the late Queen on many occasions. In his tribute, the leader of the Labour Party, Sir Keir Starmer, said that every time he had the privilege of meeting the Queen, she would ask the most searching questions because she wanted to understand the lives and struggles of her people, and as Britain changed rapidly around her, this dedication became the still point of our turning world. The generation born before 1939, like the late Queen, experienced World War Two as children and young people. The Princess Elizabeth, when speaking to children living away from home due to war, such as my own in-laws for example, they heard the Queen say, when peace comes, remember it will be for us, the children of today, to make the world of tomorrow a better and happier place. This remains the task of future generations. We are united in mourning and united in celebrating her life. This togetherness is a reminder of what she achieved, a reminder of our shared values, values which we know will be upheld by her successor. We will honour the late Queen's memory by keeping alive the values of public service that she embodied and pledging our allegiance to her beloved son, Charles. God bless our late Queen, God save the King.
Councillor Bloxham, thank you. Councillor Kate Cody to second please.
Thank you Chair. The Green Group offer condolences to the Queen's family. Queen Elizabeth the Second was a remarkable woman who worked tirelessly to serve her country. She was an inspiration to so many, both at home and around the world. As probably the most famous person on the planet, it is impossible to measure the positive influence she had, in particular on so many women and girls. We shall never know exactly the true reach of her example to the generations that grew up under her. She often walked a tightrope with dignity and diplomacy, shaking hands and conversing with people she would perhaps rather not have. Presidents Armin, Assad, Mugabe, Putin and Ceausescu, to name a few. If she could cope with them fellow members, perhaps in her memory, we can aspire to endure one another more graciously. Her sense of humour was subtle but never far away. On meeting President Trump, she took care to wear a brooch given as a gift by President and Mrs Obama. The then Crown Prince Abdullah of Saudi Arabia, which at the time did not allow women to drive, was treated to a white-knuckle ride across the Balmoral Estate in the front seat of a Land Rover driven at high speed by the Queen. As well as being a fan of the ridiculous, she was of course well-known for her love of horses and dogs, and she was partial to cattle, as I discovered whilst as a teenager in attendance at the South of England show, where I was spending the weekend with my mentor Bridget, born in the same year as the Queen. We were showcasing driving a pair of Sussex oxen. Just before our parade, there was a sudden presence of guards carrying swords and we were cordoned off. Perhaps we assumed that health and safety were no longer happy with stuff and nonsense, who were the only Sussex oxen at the time to retain their impressive, if rather imposingly very long, horns. So it was quite a relief for us to learn that it was actually only the Queen that wanted to meet us. Bridget, who had milked cows for exiled royals, had a photo of us with the Queen framed as she cherished meeting one of her idols. Elizabeth Windsor was an excellent example of a woman in charge, and with that spirit in mind, I am most pleased to second this motion.
Thank you councillor Cody. Members, can you indicate if you wish to speak in a normal fashion please? Thank you. Councillor Alkinson.
Thank you. I wanted to start by talking about, I think, the depth of feeling which the Queen's passing has led to, and then talk about her leadership and the qualities which I think we can all aspire to ourselves in our own public service. I must admit, as Mark said earlier, that I was surprised at the depth of feeling and emotion which I personally experienced when I heard the news that the Queen was seriously ill, and then when she passed away. It did actually feel like the passing of a mum or a grandma, and I think for many of us, it brought back our own memories of bereavement and loss. This is therefore a time, I think, for us to be mindful, not only for our own mental wellbeing, but also the mental wellbeing of our constituents and the people we know who may be affected by the sombre tone of TV and radio. It's a time of profound change, and change, as we know, brings fear, it brings upheaval, and it brings uncertainty. For me though, the key reflection of the loss of the Queen is about leadership. Although the Queen wasn't of course a political leader, she was an influencer, a great influencer, and someone whom a large number of people look to for inspiration, for guidance and for reassurance. And that leadership was all about being calm, it was about being assured, it was about being constant, and it was about being reliable. It was about stickability. And these attributes are the best of leadership, they really are. It wasn't chaotic, it wasn't last minute, it wasn't rushed and it wasn't volatile. It was quite the reverse of those things. Queen Elizabeth literally never gave up. She was persistent, she was conscientious, and these are all the skills and attributes which I know I aspire to, and we should all aspire to, as public servants. And a word now about our new head of state, our new monarch, King Charles the Third, and it still feels strange to use that term, doesn't it, King Charles the Third? But he of course has been a resident of Gloucestershire for decades, choosing to make his home near Tetbury in the Cotswolds, and many of us like him have also chosen to go and live in the Cotswolds. He is clearly a man of good taste. His affection for our area is clear, and I think we should be pleased as a result that our new king has Gloucestershire firmly in his mind, so that we won't be forgotten about, I'm sure. Finally, as with all things, there is a positive to be gained from sadness and change. The best way to remember the Queen's life is for us to be as dedicated as community leaders as she was. That would indeed be the most fitting tribute. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Alkinson. Councillor Stephen Foylefield.
Thank you, thank you Chair. Firstly, on behalf of the people of Pittville and Presbury, I would like to put on the record my condolences to the royal family. The heartbreaking images of Her Majesty's children guarding her coffin in St Charles Cathedral in Scotland is an important reminder that she not only was a head of state, but also a mother and a grandmother as well. I did not have the honour of meeting Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth as one of the younger members of this chamber. I was too young to experience the death of Princess Diana, and I can only just grasp the memories of the Queen mother's funeral, but I personally have never seen anything close to the sense of loss and grief that we have all experienced in the last week for a public figure. I was only a few minutes away from Buckingham Palace when her passing was announced, and I immediately went down to the palace to pay my respects in a state of dizzy incredulity. When I arrived, there were already crowds scrambling to see the announcement board braced onto the palace gates, and it felt like the epicentre of a shock. onto the palace gates, and it felt like the epicentre of a shock rippling across the nation and the world. Later in the evening, I convened with friends of a similar age to myself, and there was almost a sense, as has already been articulated very well, a sense of maternal loss. Some needed company, some wanted to be alone to grieve in their own way. I personally felt a sense of being rudderless and rootless, and for someone I had never met, a very unique and peculiar emotion. In Her Majesty's own words, 'We only mourn because we love,' and love was what we felt for her and she felt for us. She not only mar- she not only marstled us through the Cold War, took us from the age of the telegram to the age of the optic fibre cable, she also formed our modern sense of national identity. But more importantly, she was the epitome of universal values, the best of the monarchy and humanity, devotion, service, integrity, honour, and family, while also doing it with a smile. She was both happy and glorious. She was also a shared symbol for seventy years of memory and experience, and a portal to over a thousand years of shared heritage, institutions, customs, values, and way of life. We felt we knew her, and by extension, we felt we knew our own country and our own countrymen and women. She was a centre for all of us to bind to. Churchill called her the big- her reign, the start of her reign, the beginning of a second Elizabethan golden age, a promise, in my view, that was kept and surmounted. It is a great testament to her that we will always call ourselves proudly Elizabethans, and her memory and achievements will live on. In the words of Simon Armitage, the poet Laureate, who wrote this poem as a response to her passing, 'A blurred new day breaks uncrowned on remote peaks and public parks, and everything turns on these luminous petals and deep roots. This lily that thrives between spire and tree, whose brightness holds and glows beyond the life and the border of its bloom.' Looking to the future, I pray for the King and hope the love that we've all seen shown to his mother will give him the courage and fortitude to take us forward into a new golden age. God save the King.
Thank you, councillor Foylefield. Councillor Lyndon Stowe.
On behalf of the people I represent in the North Cotswolds, I want to echo the words of others today and to endorse the motion. I want to add my own thank you, ma'am, for your exemplary service and dedication to the peoples who looked to you. By any reckoning, Queen Elizabeth was a quite remarkable woman, a truly great human being, whose lasting attribute will be one of calmness and of wisdom in such choppy seas and such troubled times. And she is entirely worthy of the deep gratitude and admiration being expressed today and over the past few days. She was a beacon and a guiding light to so many, and who will ever forget that most wonderful smile? Queen Elizabeth did not reign over her peoples, she served her people, and that is a huge testament. Thank you.
Councillor Stowe, thank you. Councillor Cathy Williams.
The loss of Her Majesty the Queen has brought many memories back for myself. In 1953, I was in the crowd watching the coronation procession, sat on my father's shoulders. As I was only two and a half years old, I cannot remember anything, unfortunately, but at least I can say I was there. My first formal invitation to be in the presence of Her Majesty was in the form of the Royal Garden Party at Buckingham Palace in my early days as a county councillor. The occasion was very memorable. For those members unfamiliar with protocol, garden royal parties, you need to know that you get selected to be spoken to by the Queen or any other royal, so in other words, you have to be quiet. When they appear at the top of the palace steps, guests form orderly rows, and the royal family member then walks down the middle. Being short, I found myself with three people in front of me, and I was struggling to see anything. However, I was lucky, as Her Majesty the Queen was walking just in front of us. I don't know what exactly happened, but there was a shift in the crowd, putting me immediately behind Her Majesty, walking next to her lady-in-waiting. It could not have been better. I was escorting the Queen as she moved along, talking to those people who had been selected. No one made me move, and I had a really enjoyable conversation with her lady-in-waiting, and could listen to Her Majesty talking to the lucky individuals who had been selected. I looked to my right, and two of our independent members of the county council at that time were also stood watching me, and they said, 'How did you get there?' My second event was when Her Majesty was invited to open the Gloucestershire College, and I was a cabinet member of the city council at the time. We were all placed on tables as it was a lunch, and I was to be sat on the table next to Her Majesty. Everyone was stood waiting for Her Majesty as she had gone to use the facilities and freshen up before the lunch. But as she walked into the dining room, I was the first person she saw. She gave me one of those wonderful smiles as she was famous for, and I gave her the dutiful courtesy. During the lunch with her, I was sat immediately across from her bodyguard, who never took his eyes off her, but he told us that when the Queen finishes her lunch, you must finish as well. Consequently, our table went very quiet, and everyone got on with eating their lunch. A truly memorable occasion. Thank you, ma'am, for your service to our country. God save the King.
Councillor Williams, thank you. Councillor Chloe Turner.
Thank you, Chair. On behalf of the residents of Minchinhampton, Brimscombe Thrup, and Chalford, myself amongst them, I'd like to join all those who've spoken before me in playing tribute to our late Queen. A woman who's deeply informed and judiciously granted counsel, has gently guided, and no doubt many times saved our country over her seventy-year reign. From her tremendous record of charitable support, patron to no less than six hundred causes, we saw Her Majesty's clear interest in our world and its future. Many nature-led charities, such as the RSPB, the Campaign for the Protection of Rural England, and the Royal Forestry Society, all enjoyed her patronage. Trees were planted across the country in her Platinum Jubilee Year after she requested everyone mark the occasion by planting for her Queen's Green Canopy Project. Queen Elizabeth's interest extended further into the wider realm of science and critical thinking, is amplified in her strong links to the Linnaean Society, the Royal Astronomical Society, the Royal Society, and the Royal Society of Australia, as well as Imperial College of Science and Technology. She read widely and deeply, and world leaders have lined up to praise the Queen's wisdom. Queen Elizabeth was an optimist but clear-eyed about human weakness. In her Christmas broadcast back in 2011, she spoke of her concern for us all in this uncertain world. Although we are capable of great acts of kindness, history teaches us that we sometimes need saving from ourselves, from our recklessness or our greed. Her Majesty was known to be frustrated by the pace of change to address the climate emergency, and addressing the most recent COP, she noted that 'the time for words has now moved to the time for action.' In the wake of the loss of an anchor point for our country, we would do well to take forward the value Her Majesty attached to science and scholarship, as well as her ingrained moral compass that so clearly registered not just the long tradition behind her but also those yet to come. Indeed, in her very first public speech in 1940, as a young woman and still a princess, Queen Elizabeth had already embraced this need to think of our descendants. 'Remember it will be for us,' she said, 'the children of today, to make the world of tomorrow a better and happier place.' Deepest condolences to Her Majesty's family and those closest to her at this sad time.
Councillor Turner, thank you very much. Councillor Susan Williams.
Thank you, Chair. As a county councillor, I represent Bisley, Brookthorpe, Cranham, Harescombe, Misden, Painswick, Pitchcombe, Randwick and Westrip, Upton St Leonard's, Whitesill and Ruscombe. On the passing of Queen Elizabeth, I offer our sincere and heartfelt condolences to His Majesty the King, the royal family, and members of the royal household. We give thanks for her tireless and selfless devotion of duty and service as our monarch and as our ambassador throughout the world. Unlike other councillors here present, or in fact members of our communities throughout our county, I have not met the Queen in person. I did not have that honour or privilege, but she was ever present in my life and in my family's life. And one of the proudest moments of my life, sorry, was receiving the title of Queen's Nurse from the Queen's Nursing Institute, one of my proudest moments, a testament of how she touched so many people's lives on a day-to-day basis. On Friday, I was fortunate amongst others to toll the bell at Cranham Church. The church was full of young and older-like, a community coming together in grief, shock, and quite frankly disbelief, a true measure of the deep respect and love that the Queen was held in, and we have been truly blessed to have her as our Queen. Sorry. May Her Majesty now rest in peace. Our King Charles could not have had a better role model, as have she has gently guided him in preparation for this role. God save the King.
Thank you, councillor Williams. Councillor Tim Arman.
Thank you, Chairman. Like many others, I didn't have the honour and privilege of meeting Her Majesty, but I did see her on six or seven occasions, the first one of which was when she came to Chuxbury Abbey in 1971 to distribute the modern day money. And I can remember going with my mum, I was fourteen at the time, on the bus to Chuxbury, and as we went over the bridge by the Racecourse railway station, the double-decker bus, we could see the Royal Train which was in the, on the station, which is still there. And when we went to the abbey, we watched her walk through the grounds, and that's probably the closest I ever got to her. I remember being received by Sir George and Lady Doughty. Another occasion that I saw was at Cheltenham Races in 2009. Now, we know she loved horse racing. She mainly rode round her horses, which, many of which she managed to breed herself at Sandringham on the flat, but she did inherit a few horses from the Queen Mother, who obviously were jumpers. And she had a horse called Barber Shop running in the Gold Cup that day, and you could see by her face, I could see her on the balcony, that she was absolutely irrelevant with anything to do with horses, and she clearly loved it. But I think we probably wished to, we wished to see her more at the Gold Cup, but it was lovely to see her that day. Then I was privileged to go to Buckingham Palace to a garden party and saw her again fairly recently, on the day when she was wearing dark glasses, because you might remember she had a problem with her eyes. So she was an amazing sovereign, and like everybody else, there's something just not real about the change. While I watched last night her coffin return to Buckingham Palace, it also struck me that she'd been not just part of history, but an extraordinary witness to it. She was the last surviving member of the balcony party in 1945 on VE Day at the end of the war, when she stood on the balcony as Princess Elizabeth with the King and Queen and Sir Winston Churchill. And legend had it, has it, that she got permission from the King to go out that night into the crowd with her cap pulled down, so she'd experience the excitement, so nobody would recognise her. So, Chairman, on behalf of the people of Lansdowne Park and myself, I wholeheartedly support the motion and saying God save the King.
Thank you, councillor Harman. Councillor Lisa Spivey.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to start by passing on sincere and heartfelt condolences from the people of the South Surney Division that I represent, and indeed the larger Lib Dem group here at GCC. It's been really moving to hear some of these tributes today, some of them very personal, so thank you for sharing, sharing those thoughts and memories with us. In the days since the announcement of the Queen's death, we've, the airwaves have been filled with, with many tributes, anecdotes, and personal remembrances. I have to say that in amongst much of the grief and sadness, those stories and anecdotes have been a beam and beacon of positivity and joy, because I think what they've done is they've peeled back the layers of this extraordinary woman and, and revealed somebody truly remarkable, actually. We've, we've often said it, but she was the very nature and embodiment of the words 'service' and 'duty.' But she was also, it seems, a very compassionate woman who was able to transcend boundaries of age, race, gender, language, and social class. I've heard stories from women in Africa, in Australia, in places from all around the world, and I think that is truly, goes down to who she really was as a, as a person. I think that ability to genuinely connect with people from here in, in our wonderful United Kingdom, the Commonwealth, and indeed the whole world is part of what made her so special. I also didn't actually meet the Queen, so got no personal anecdote to share, but I know that from those that did meet her, that those encounters created memories which will never be forgotten. The Queen has been a constant, steadfast, unwavering presence in our lives. She pertains to the very fabric of it. She's on our coins and our banknotes, our stamps, her unmistakable profile. Every year at 3pm, she becomes that extra family member joining us for Christmas. I've reflected on the many aspects of her life in the last few days, and a couple of things stand out. First and foremost is that dedication to her job as head of state. True, she was from a different era, but how many people can say they started work at practically birth or a very, very young age, and then after a very unexpected promotion, stayed in her role for seven decades? Wow. Secondly, her, she, you know, that she was a woman. Her longest reigning monarch was a woman, and she was practically, I think, really the, one of the most iconic and important feminists of the last 100 years. She normalised working women in a time where that didn't happen. She showcased adventurous women travelling around the world, and she gave a voice to articulate and powerful women. Lastly, it seems that the Queen had a sparkling sense of humour. I love that. And a typically British, self-deprecating sense of humour, quick to laugh and joke. Yes, she took the role of monarch very, very seriously, but she did not take herself seriously. I think this was shown to our great joy in her 2012 encounter with James Bond. I love that twinkle and that smile when she says, 'Evening, Mr Bond.' And most recently, with her tea with one of our favourite bears. My husband had the privilege of... My husband had the privilege of working on that film, and he and the director felt that they were concerned prior to the shoot that the Queen may be upstaged by Paddington. Never. She was in fact a great actress, it seems, amongst everything else. So in an attempt to rationalise and sort of understand why we have been so affected by her passing, I think what it boils down to is her genuine humanity and that care and love that she gave to all. Thank you, Your Majesty. I'm now going to have my emergency marmalade sandwich. God save the King.
Thank you councillor Spivey. Councillor Steve Robinson, he's the last member, I think, who's indicated so far. Have I seen any more members? So councillor Steve Robinson.
Thank you Chair. It's an honour for me to be paying tribute to Her Late Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, on behalf of my residents in Amberley, Horsey, King Stanley, Nelsworth and Warchester. Our Queen dedicated her life to the service of our country, Scotland, Wales, Northern Ireland and the Commonwealth. She was our constant, she was constant throughout these ever-changing times. I, like many others, never had the privilege of meeting her, though I did attend a garden party and I wasn't at the front. It was a very rainy day, I remember. But I have had the honour of meeting many of her family on different occasions. Our thoughts and prayers are with King Charles III and his family at this great loss. God save the Queen. God save the King, sorry. So used to saying that. God save the King.
Thank you councillor Robinson. councillor Pam Tracy. Go now.
I'll tell you a story about this in a moment. Your Majesty, Queen Elizabeth, you are my inspiration. It was always special being in your company. To me, you were a wonderful leader, ambassador and mother to all. May you rest in peace and rise in glory. I had the privilege of being with the Royals for a few years. I'm also president of the Royal Society St George, our Queen in Country. So I've had that honour. And I always remember when they asked me to be president, the Queen was patron. And I did, and I came off when one of her, the councilwoman answered the Queen. And they asked and they said to me, and I said, 'No way.' I said, 'No way could I do that.' And blah blah. And they said to me, they said, 'Well, we want you Pam.' They said, 'Because you've been with the Royals, you've been dealing with it for a long, long time.' So anyhow, I said, 'I don't know, I'll have to speak to the committee', blah blah. And eventually, they rang me up and said, 'Pam, what about it?' And I said, 'Look, how can I do it? You all live in stately homes, manors, palaces and whatever. I only live in a terrace house. Where am I going to have my garden parties?' Well, actually, I did have a little Roger Heids house the other week, and thanks to him, he gave it to the Queen's Platinum where I could, as President, invite the guests. It has been, I've been just thinking now, what Tim just said. I was at Chuxbury Abbey that day, going back years ago. It was quite nice. I think we had a bit of rain then. I was only younger then. And I was there in her presence. I remember she sat in the fire corner in a marquee, wasn't it, in the back of the Abbey? Yeah, yeah. And so I also, I also had the privilege of going to the palace, many palaces. The only one I haven't done was Bemoral and all the Scotland ones. I could tell you everything inside there, what the Queen did, but I won't say everything. But I'll just say when she used to go to Hampton Court, just inside the main door to the left by the fireplace, there was a jigsaw. And when she went in, she always used to put pieces of the jigsaw in, you know, to make it grow. Didn't grow that much because she wasn't there that often in the summer. Also, she was, like you say, she was a down-to-earth lady. Always smiling, loved to joke. And in fact, she was better than me with jokes. So I'm just going to go through a piece. When I had the privilege of shrove Tuesday, morning Thursday in the cathedral, and she came to Gloucester and I said, 'Gee.' And they said, 'Yeah, we picked that day when you were in office.' And I remember there was a lot of going. I was working here in Shawall then. And the daughter Tannet kept ringing me up, blah blah. And he said, 'I'm actually in someone's private house.' And I said, 'Yeah.' And I said, 'What's your problem?' And he said, 'Well, the Taylor of Gloucester celebrates 100 years of Beatrice Potter. And they would like the Queen to go to the shop in College Court here and to have the book presented to her.' And he wrote back, and he rang me back and he said, 'The Queen wants you to do it.' And yes, and I said, 'Incidentally, while you're on the phone, will you please tell the Queen I will be wearing royal blue?' And he said, 'Well, I don't know if I can say that.' But anyhow, and that's where it comes with this picture. I've got catalogues of pictures. But this picture here tells a big story, and going back a bit. Because when we went back from the cathedral, we went, like they say, for comfort better. And then there was nothing like that, velvet seats, nothing like that, because she went upstairs and I waited down. And then we went in the garden a bit, in the dean's garden. And I said, and she opened this little parcel. And I said, 'What's all this about there?' She said, 'Oh, it's lovely.' She said, 'Someone in the crowd gave me a photograph.' And she said, 'That's very nice, ma'am.' As in Pam, she said to me. And I said, 'Oh, that's nice.' And you know my humour. And I said, 'What was it?' She said, 'Oh, you'll never believe it.' She went like that. And I said, 'She said, it's only the lady was in Australia and the Queen was over in Australia.' And it turned out that the outfit she had on was the outfit she had on that day in Gloucester. She couldn't believe it. I said, 'That's good,' I said, 'because it shows you recycle.' And then I'm going to read, what else was it? There was like the morning Thursday. Back to the dean's house we went and the Queen. And I remember too, with the Queen here, and I'll talk more about Gloucester. She said that we went in. I remember Pandit Danda. And I know I had to introduce the Queen to Pandit Danda. And I couldn't get his young lady's name out. And I said, 'Oh, Queen, you'll just have to ask him yourself', like, you know. And we went into the cathedral, into the chapter house and sat down for the meal. And if I got time to read you this, but I did say, 'Your Majesty, Your Royal Highness, my daughter Tannet, may I welcome Your Majesty and His Royal Highness to the city of Gloucester and to a historic cathedral on this morning Thursday. Absolutely delighted that this visit has taken place during my term of office. I'm privileged to serve on the local committee, the Royal Society St George, and they were thrilled to learn Your Majesty's visit to Gloucester. The last occasion on which Your Majesty visited our city was in 1986 on Vella Park in memory of the late Duke of Oxford and to open the new Widdons School and the elderly persons home at Great Western Court.' She spent a lot of time in Gloucester. His Royal Highness visits our city most recently, 2001, is Colonel Cheathorall, Gloucester Bazaars, Berkshire and Wiltshire Regiment. The former Gloucestershire Regiment is affectionately known to us as the Glorious Gloucesters and has a proud history. We also join links with the Royal Air Force at Innsworth. Your Majesty and His Royal Highness' first visit Gloucester in 1955 for the 800th anniversary of our grant of our city's first Royal Chapter by Henry the Second. And many people are happy memories of that special occasion. I was one of those schoolchildren in Gloucester Park and remember the visit very well. I remember that visit very well. She came along. In fact, the television recorded her and I'm on the television speaking about her. And then my mother then took me to the Gloucester Tech in the afternoon on that day. The Book of the Taylor Gloucester by Beatrice Potter celebrates its 100th anniversary this year. And to mark this royal visit today, the House of Taylor Gloucester, a shop museum in College Court, will be honoured if Your Majesty would accept a copy of this delightful story. And I presented that to her. We had then the, when we...
councillor Tracy, could you just wind up now, please?
Sorry?
Could you just finish up, please?
Well, I have, yeah. So, but where I'm coming from, I was in her, and the Duke's present many times, and also with the Royals, and especially Charles. I got photos of now King Charles III. And what the Queen was very, I did say to her, the town crier welcomed her. And I said to her, 'You, she has a big mouth, ma'am.' And when she left to go into the cloisters, I think Mark was there, went into the cloisters, she went up to the town crier and said, 'I hear you've got a big mouth.' We talked loads and loads of things, and I can't say all what we've done and what I still do. But it was a privilege. She is very inspiring, a very homely mother, a good cook, and she's everything. And may she rest in peace and God save our King Charles III. I have a book, I got many books, which they put together for me. God bless you, ma'am, and God bless the King.
Councillor Tracy, thank you very much. councillor Phil Horford.
I'll follow that. Mister Chairman, thank you for allowing me a few minutes, and it will be a few minutes, in doing so, I'm speaking on behalf of those 21 parishes that make up the division of Hainham and the many residents who have expressed their sadness to me. Whilst we always knew this day would come, it is of course impacted on the nation and Gloucestershire very, very deeply. Our links with the Royal Family have been with us for decades. Indeed, those of us who have had the privilege of representing both the county and the district in civic posts have met the family members on quite a few occasions. Like many, sadly, I did not meet Her Majesty, but I have met our new monarch on several occasions. Her Majesty will be remembered for her stoic sense of duty and service. I'm sure she will have instilled all of her great qualities into her son as he now takes the reins. Gloucestershire is rich in those features so loved by Her Majesty, not least its rural and equine heart. It is difficult to say anything any different to the many tributes today. But from Ashworth to Ockington, the sadness is so very, very evident. And the loss of the monarch that most of us have only known given her seven decades deeply, deeply felt by all. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Horford. Councillor Emma Nelson.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. And on behalf of the people of Lechampton and Warden Hill in Cheltenham, I'd like to pay tribute, and I absolutely echo and agree wholeheartedly with all that we've heard this morning. It's very difficult to add to it, but I have a few specific anecdotes that I feel I would be amiss if I didn't share. Although I never personally met the Queen Elizabeth II, I have been fortunate to have seen her on several occasions and as so many of us here feel a personal profound sense of loss. Queen Elizabeth II visited Cheltenham, as we've heard, on many occasions to pursue her passion for horse racing, as well as fulfilling various official engagements, including naming Princess Elizabeth Way in Cheltenham in 1951, and in 2004, visiting the Ladies' College and opening the GCHQ new building known affectionately as the Donut. Ex-mayor and Warden Hill councillor Anne Regan recalls one of those earliest visits in 1951, and I quote, 'I was about 10 when I watched the princess, as she was then, officially open the new council houses in Dynas Road in Warden Hill. She wore a deep maroon coat dress with matching hat. She was so beautiful and slim. I even crawled through all the legs to get to the front and tried to touch her coat.' Of the visit in 2004, I'm told that when the Queen came to Cheltenham, she was already aware of the stunning town centre floral displays and specifically asked to meet the gardeners responsible. An example of how she always did her research about where she was going, and she was really interested in everyone involved at all levels. And we have Weaver's Field at the heart of Warden Hill, a beautiful, open green space that was threatened of being turned into allotments back in 2011. But thanks to huge public support, the council-owned field received Queen Elizabeth II field status in 2012, given as part of the Queen's Dalmatian Jubilee celebrations. And so it's now protected for future generations. And on a personal level, I'd just like to say, rest in peace. A unique and remarkable woman, who served so many for so long and with such humility. An incredible example to us all how we should behave. Always smiling, putting others first and interested in all. To quote Giles Brandis, who put it so succinctly, and no one has mentioned this yet, she truly was sustained by faith and driven by duty. Thank you, Your Majesty.
councillor Nelson, thank you. councillor Brian Tipper.
Thank you Chair. I must admit, I hadn't prepared anything to say, but I think it would be remiss for me not to get up and represent the people that I represent. I too, never met her. I saw some of the Royal Family, obviously they lived local to us. I had a business in Tetbury and I had the privilege of selling things to Paddy the gardener and that sort of thing. But I never got the Queen's recognition. But Joe, joking aside, all my family were service orientated, the Navy. But the only one that wasn't represented was the Royal Air Force. I've got to say, at the point in time when I first became aware of the Royal Family as a young, a very young boy, five or six years old, was when my mother had, we were all listening to the radio, and my mother acknowledged that the fact that the King, the Queen's father, had just died. So that's about 1952. I've got to say, at that point in time, we were not sure what had happened. But my uncle was abroad in Korea and had been either, well, we didn't know at the time, either killed or captured at the Imogen River. He actually went on to serve three years in the Chinese prisoner of war camp. But what I wanted to do was get up and represent the people I, and say on behalf of the people I represent, that, and that is for the county, Berkeley, Hamfallo, Hinton and Cam Parish. And as a district councillor, I represent Cam East. And all I would like to say is I bring sincere respect and greetings and condolences to all of the Royal Family. Lots have been said today that, and I haven't heard one word, Lots have been said today that, and I haven't heard one word that I don't concur with. God save the King.
Councillor Tipper, thank you. I want to conclude with the vice chairman. Would any other member like to speak before? Councillor Hurst, yes. First of all, councillor Willingham.
Thank you, Chairman. On behalf of the residents of St Mark's and St Peter's, I would wish to extend our sincere condolences to His Majesty, King Charles III and the rest of the royal family at this time. I would also wish to associate myself with the tributes from others who have far more eloquently captured the spirit of this moment. The thing which highlights to me the utmost worldwide respect in which Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, was held were the words and actions of those she had worked with, but for whom she was not the head of state. Whether this be the moving tribute from President Macron of France, who said to you, she was your queen, to us, she was the queen. The images of every flag flying at half mast outside the European Parliament building in Brussels. Or the words of Germany's Bundespräsident Steinwehr, who said, Sie hat seit Geschichte erlebt und sie hat seit Geschichte geschrieben. These, along with the heartfelt tributes from numerous other world leaders, highlight her global reputation and the admiration and respect that she earned. Thank you.
Councillor Willingham, thank you. Councillor Andrew Gravels.
Thank you, Chairman. My community of Abidale and Abimee, like all of the other communities that we represent across Gloucestershire, came together this summer to mark the 70th anniversary of the accession of Queen Elizabeth II to the throne. It was a great and happy occasion in my neighbourhood. And as I visited the various street parties, I saw firsthand, at first hand, the high regard and admiration that people in my area and right across Gloucester have for Her Majesty the Queen. During those days, my thoughts and memories went way back to 1977, during the Silver Jubilee, when I was first elected to this county council. Then back in 1977, I represented the Tredworth area of Gloucester. And as a new rookie county councillor, I began to wonder just how on earth I could ever organise and arrange the Silver Jubilee celebrations to adequately mark and show our respect and love for the Queen in her Silver Jubilee year. Chairman, there was no Google to fall back on then, no Alexa to ask, no Facebook to see volunteers on, no Twitter to get the message out. But to the eternal credit of the people in my neighbourhood, of Tredworth, once the message was out that we were going to meet at the local rugby club to get the ball rolling to mark the Silver Jubilee, as in 2022, there was no stopping the community. People wanted to show how much they loved and respected Her Majesty. The then city MP Sally Oppenheim promised and stuck to her word that on Silverly, sorry, Silver Jubilee night itself, she would be in Tredworth Rugby Club as our special guest for the evening. Some people say that times have changed now. But when it comes to the love and respect people here in Gloucester have for Her Majesty, nothing at all has changed. The city's love and respect for the Queen and the royal family remains unswerving. And none of us will ever forget the huge debt we owe to Queen Elizabeth for her service and duty to this great nation of ours. Rest in peace, Your Majesty, and thank you so much for your example of service to others, both here and right across the Commonwealth. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gravels. Members, any more speakers, please? Councillor Stephen Hurst.
Thank you, Chair. I would just like to share with you examples of the Queen's sense of humour. I was once in Exeter and I had about two minutes to catch the train. So I ran down to the station and there's an emergency exit to St David's Station. And I rode round this corner only to be confronted by a slight lady with an entourage. 'Twas the Queen. Oh, I'm sorry, Your Majesty. My apologies. She said, never mind, you'd better hurry up or you'll miss your train. The second example was the Windsor Horse Show, which I used to go to at quite a frequent basis. Now, one year I wore, I thought it was rather striking, blue striped blazer. And it was very blue and very striped. And as we were walking down the, the walk past the tents, who should come out of this tent here but Her Majesty? And I think she took one look at my blazer and did a double take. And there was some whispers at the back from one of her entourage who said, well, he, he made a mark, didn't he? So she really has had an experience of a great sense of humour, which we should all be very grateful for. I live in the constituency of King Charles III. And may I wish him all the best in the future and say to him, God save the King. Thank you.
Councillor Hurst, thank you very much. I'm now going back to the leader, councillor Mark Hawthorne to sum up.
Thank you. I'm, I'm not going to say very much, I think, other than to thank all members who've taken the time to pay their tributes today. I know many of you have brought to this chamber your own personal experiences or stories from your communities. I think it's also worth noting that we've had a, a number of councillors who've given our apologies today, who wanted to say something as part of this tribute and debate. They have sent us a, a written contribution. And that contribution, along with all of the contributions that we made today, will be placed on the public record. We clearly have some tough days ahead and the funeral on Monday, I think, will be a moment to reflect on a life well-lived, but on the great loss we all suffer. But I would like to take the opportunity to thank all members today for allowing this today to take place. And Mr Chairman, I ask that we put the motion to the vote.
Thank you, Leader. All those in favour of the motion, please show. That's unanimous. Thank you very much, members. Before we conclude, I've just got a couple of announcements. Marks just stole my thunder on the one, in light of the historic significance of today's meeting. You'll notice that there's been a lot of photographs being taken this morning. All the record of this meeting will be placed on record, including people like Graham Morgan, David Drew and Dave Norman, who aren't here this morning, but have put written contributions in. Following last Thursday, a number of our officers certainly had to step up to the plate at a very, very short notice. And I've got thanks for a few. If I've missed any, please correct me or add later. Louise Antonova in the civil protection team, Adam Barnes in the comms team, Pete Bungard, Rob Aliff, the custodians flying the flags, the end sign, putting it up, putting it down and half mast, four masts whatsoever. The DSU team under Steve Bass, particularly Joe Moore. And I know Joe has been working closely with the Lord Lieutenant Edward Gillespie and the OI Sheriff, Air Marshal Sir Dusty Miller, to coordinate activities with the cathedral, the six district councils, the parish and town councils, the constabulary, the fire and rescue service, the armed forces, emergency planning teams. And I know, Joe, you've been working well beyond normal working hours over recent days. So on behalf of the council, very sincere thanks to you. Thank you very much on that one. And a round of applause, I think, would be quite out there. Finally, members, a book of condolence is in situ, just inside the foyer of Shire All up steps, just in there. So I'm sure that you'd like to sign that. And it just leaves me with one final thing to say. God save the King. Thank you, members.
God save the King.
Thank you, members.